Finish, type that in, in the chat box. Just if you need translation, raise your hand. Because we have a, we have a phone number and somebody who's V and B Whip. I don't know them.
That's our, Brania is our technology to us. Brania Whip?
Whip?
Yeah.
Okay, great, all right. So I don't know who V is or the phone number, but they may need Spanish translation. Oh, oh yeah, thank you, Ms. Whip. Or, not sure, yeah. We, yeah, maybe, there we go, thank you. Okay, well, the world of Zoom, it's always something interesting, isn't it?
So Leslie is telling me that Equity, all lowercase, is still not working for her. So I'm not sure.
Oh, I just used it.
Yeah, and so did.
Ask her to try one more time. Or, well, she probably has tried more than once.
Brania said it worked for her.
And then make sure it's the six o'clock meeting, not the seven, you know, everything. Yes, so many things to check.
Eliana, did you say you updated it on the agenda?
Yeah, they may be logging on to the wrong session.
So I had to say Equity worked for me.
All right, we'll give it just another minute.
I just sent an email to everybody just to let them know.
Okay, thank you. Well, I feel bad that some people may not be able to get on tonight. Okay, let's see. Was Leslie able to figure out the issue? I don't see her on here.
No, I told her to try signing out and then back in.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything since then.
All right. Linda, do you see the folks that you were expecting on?
Um, a couple. That's okay, I mean, we can go ahead and get started.
Okay, yeah, why don't we get started? Because we actually have a lot to cover and now we only have about 50 minutes. So, all right. Well, welcome everyone to our special study session on Equity. Let's see, actually, I think we need to do, just look at the agenda real quick. Yeah, let's do the roll call first.
Josie Wells.
Here.
Josie Lawson.
Lawson. Here.
Josie Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Here.
President Maccavoy.
Present. All right, welcome everyone to our Equity Study Session. We're going to be going over some of the Equity work we've been doing the last, really, couple of years, but particularly the last few months. And, sorry for the rocky start, that's what I wanted to say. This is welcome to the Zoom Goblin world that we live in. So I think, Linda, am I turning it over to you?
Yes.
All right.
Great, thank you so much.
We've got about 50 minutes tonight.
Okay, let's do it.
You know what, worst case, worst case, what I'm thinking is that if we don't get quite through it, we do need to shift over to the other meeting, but we could always carry it over, I think, if we needed to.
Okay. Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt real quick. Elisa, I think we need to approve the agenda first.
Oh, thank you so much. You're right, you're right. So, any changes to the agenda? All right, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Janet?
Second.
Mike?
Second.
Second, all right, roll call.
Josie Wells.
Hi.
Josie Lawson.
Hi.
Josie Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Hi.
President Maccavoy.
Hi. Okay, oral communication. Eliana or Kyle, do you see any for this particular session? I looked earlier, about an hour ago, I didn't see anything.
Let me look real quick.
Okay, thanks. Which I can probably also look. Yeah, I don't see anything. Okay, so let's go ahead and, the next item is the study session. All right, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, Dr. Baker, everyone, thank you so much. So this is an update of the work of the R C S D Equity Consciousness Committee that started. Because the school board requested to have developed administrative regulations for the newly adopted equity policy. That was adopted with Wendy Kelly and Elisa Janet, and then the board adopted it. There were close to 80 participants. It included those parents who were not only in the English-speaking group, but the Spanish-speaking group, and they represented all of our school sites, as well as the district office, facilities department, special ed department, et cetera. And it included parents, teachers, classified staff, assistant principals, principals, directors, and community members, and community partners, some of them that Andrea Guerin, for example, brought in, which was great. There was a process to be a part of the committee, except for if you were a director and you were asked to participate. But the parents who, and teachers who determined that they wanted to be a part of the Equity Committee, all of the members we saw had a strong understanding of their purpose and wanting to make a greater impact in what we were doing as a district. And, here's one other one. And many, I was really pleased to see many had had experiences, whether in their own employment as, as part of faculty in another district, or parents who were just very interested because of their own children's experience, to be a part of this and knowing that it was something that was going to be supporting our district as a whole. And so, we were led by this wonderful leader, Yvette Jackson, who has been a part of the National Urban Alliance for many years and has worked in our district. So she was an excellent facilitator and we were very, I think, very lucky to have her and really excited that she was able to join and spent a lot of time pre-planning with me to come up with a series of topics and activities that would get to what we wanted, which was to support the directors in writing the administrative regulations, knowing that the work and their suggestions would be taken into account when those were created. And so these are just a series of activities. I will say she used a lot of her own strategies that are a part of the National Urban Alliance, or N U A, as we call it, that sought to increase everyone's understanding through literature, videos, podcasts, et cetera, a number of different ways, to build an understanding of what was truly, what is equity consciousness and how that should be at the forefront of the decisions that guide our work, and also looking at kind of instructional practices and what are and what do create the systems of inequity that we might see. And then she introduced us to a tool that we finally use as part of our subcommittee work, and so I'm going to share a little bit about that. We went through a series of activities. So again, we participated in reading articles, had discussions, and there was lots of documentation of our work, which proved to be very important to us as directors when we were writing these ARs, because the evidence was clear from what people were, the participants were determining, which was of import when we later developed those ARs. It documented our, as a committee, our understanding of what, what would we hold to be of value? What do we hold that would be impermissible? And what would we hold to say, what is it that we're trying to change? What do we want to see in our district? We touched upon very heavy topics, but we did so in such a way, because she's just an excellent facilitator, that created an opportunity for us to come to an understanding. And it wasn't because she was looking for one particular, you know, definition of anything, but rather wanted to hear from everyone. And it was truly based on these articles and research. There was one particular article and conversation about student self-perceptions that I found personally also very powerful, because it talked about how students develop the self-perceptions, their self-esteem and understanding of who they are from the adults in the community. And for us, that's really important as we're teachers in the community. So not only though teachers, but anyone who the students can come into contact with. And sometimes it is through this understanding of when we have misperceptions about a student and we label students as others, whatever that other group is, then that automatically leads to kind of a misunderstanding perhaps of who is in front of us that we're working with, and then subsequently what students perceive about themselves, based on myths, misperceptions, racism, et cetera. And that's very powerful, because what we want to see are students who are strong and motivated and challenged and love learning and have a joy for, you know, education, you know, that's what we're trying to do. And so, the very powerful topics and very powerful conversations that came through her sessions. We spent a lot of time talking about what we did not want to see after we learned about institutionalized racism, et cetera, what we would not want to have in our district. And we developed an understanding that we wouldn't want to see that, because in fact, what happens is there is an impact on their student learning and ultimately student achievement. And what that looks like in some of our students is if they're being, if they feel and perceive that they're less than, then it becomes a part of who they are. And so she talks about students becoming self-actualized, and what she means by that is students coming to an understanding of who they really are, not based on misperceptions, but rather finding their strengths, their voice, and kind of knowing that they have a place at school and that they can achieve to high levels across all content areas. And so that's a really powerful message that N U A just has in general, and was definitely a part of the conversations that we had in our Equity Committee. So, I think, big, that, from the conversation about impermissibles that we didn't want to see happen, we also talked about, okay, so these are what we did not want to see happen, right? Assumptions about students because of their race, et cetera, right? Judgments about people feeling unmotivated, or restricting access to any other curriculum, all of which, by the way, this came from the parents and the community members, which they felt are part of what's happening. So I bring this out because I think it's important for us to talk about, because if we don't name it, it won't go away. So we need to be clear that these are some of the things that did, these were perceptions of what is happening, based not only from the work of the native, of the committee, but also the native Spanish-speaking community that we met with. And so, then we talked about if that, what is what we see happening, we are finding that is an impermissible, we don't want to see anymore, what is it that we do want to see? And this was an example of some of the evidence that we brought forward from our work, where we talked about, okay, what do we want to see? And then once we found out what we wanted to see, how would we get there? What would we do? And what would we expect to see in our instructional practices in terms of us getting there? And so, here's an example of one that's completed by one of the groups. So if we wanted to see an increase in staff participation, family participation, et cetera, what, and the side that's blue, what would we have to see happening? What would we have to see as actions in order to make what's on the right-hand side, which is our vision, in fact, something that is happening? And so, things like continuing our Equity Committee, schools incorporating every staff member into school-wide understanding of building relationships, ongoing long-term training about reflection on equity consciousness and practices, analyzing what equity consciousness looks like across every department, for example. We also had some understanding about what is common language that we use, because if we're going to continue to do this work, we should come to an understanding of what some of these terms mean. Sometimes we use some of this terminology to mean something perhaps a little different. And so if we're really using this as an intent to look at how we're changing some of these practices, it would be helpful to align some of our understanding of what we do actually mean when we talk about an ally. And is an ally just somebody who accepts? But is it somebody who brings up something that could be uncomfortable? When we talk about an anti-racist, what exactly does an anti-racist? What does it look like? What does it mean? What is an, what does implicit bias look like? And what are the effects of implicit bias? Or institutionalized racism, microaggressions, structural racism? So this came from a book by How to Be an Anti-Racist, Ibram X. Kendi. We used his information, and actually, he's going to be a guest speaker at one of our, at C S U Chico, that we've been invited to attend, so I'm going to send that out to Equity Committee as well, which would be great. But anyway, we came to an understanding of what some of this common language means. And then, we talked about how to cultivate equity in the Redwood City School District. And again, the group of people that we had, the committee members, were amazing, from all different parts of the district, and all different backgrounds, with different understandings. And I heard from so many different individuals of how powerful the work was. Many, this is the first time they had experienced something like this in our district and wanting to move this work forward. One of the activities, so this is one of the documents, became evidence for our group that we could use, but we were given the prompt, we are committed to cultivating equity consciousness in Redwood City School District, and basically, write a statement of what that looks like to you, what does that mean? And so each committee, or sorry, each group, and I think in this particular activity, there were 12 groups, this is just an example of one group. So we had a series of very similar activities with the native Spanish-speaking families, and I, this is, I just actually translated this, this was from the series in Spanish, but this is what they said in English. And I bring this forward because I think sometimes, again, we have misunderstandings of who, the families that we work with and their perceptions of whether they believe school is important. I've heard that, you know, some Spanish-speaking families don't care that their child isn't doing their homework, or, you know, et cetera. There's all kinds of myths. Based on what we heard from the families, that that wasn't true at all. And from, again, parents from all over the district. They wanted what any parent wants. They want their child to leave our district, who are confident learners, who have strong academic goals, who are well-prepared, who feel challenged in school, who are, develop skills to achieve, who are creative, critical thinkers, strong communicators, know math and technology. They were all over in terms of very similar ideas from any other school. And in fact, I would say, most school sites, many of them did this activity as, with their classroom teachers, administrators did this. And you will see very common patterns across the district from all groups of parents. We had a wonderful guest speaker who introduced a tool. So Dr. Linda Darling-Hammon came and presented a tool that then guided the work of the subcommittee groups who were directly, who were being led by the directors from each of the departments. And so she shared a tool called the Dare Tool. It was one that was created by the Learning Policy Institute, and it's called the District's Advancing Racial Equity. It's a tool that encompasses all of the elements, so that a district can look systemically at what is going on and develop a plan that incorporates each of perhaps the departments, which is exactly what we needed to do. So for each of the departments, we were given a series of questions and evidence to look at to determine whether these items were in place. And then the subcommittee, so all of the parents and teachers, et cetera, worked with their director as part of a department, and found evidence or not of whether these elements were in place. So we looked at First Division for District-Wide Racial Equity, Access to Deeper Learning, that included culturally responsive curriculum and practices, safe, healthy and inclusive school environments, financial, human and material resources, meaningful partnerships, and systems for gathering, communicating and using data. So this was excellent. So in fact, every director had one of these items on this wheel to look at with their particular group. And they were given, for example, the ask is, what's the question we're asking? What are we looking for? Were we're talking about, for example, a vision, that's a district-wide vision on racial equity? And then what do we look for? And what would the, we expect to see in the language? For example, in the vision and mission statement, as well as, again, one for each of the departments. This is an example for the Ed Services Department, which was used. Okay, so we asked the question, and then we gathered evidence based specifically on these. And it didn't have to be limited to this. I mean, conversations were about not only these items, these bullets, but additional information. And this is where a lot of the parents or teachers shared their lived experiences in our district. And this was really a powerful part of the conversation as well. During that small group work, and here at the top right is kind of the tool that the directors use to gather the evidence for each of the questions, what's the evidence, and what are some suggestive next steps or actions? Each of the committee members had, took, as part of what they could look at to review to come up with the evidence, the actual Dare Tool that helped guide the conversations. But that multi-flow map, which is the right and the blue and red columns I showed you, the Do's and Don'ts document and the group commitment documents, all of these I just showed you in prior slides. But those were all pieces of evidence that could be used to pull from if the members needed to go back and look at these specific items. And then, with all that information, I met with each individual director, and I just kind of met with the directors, asked, you know, specific questions about how the group, the committee went. They shared their document, that evidence document. We had a conversation about what were those essential elements that they felt was most important, that they wanted to hold as part of an AR, and what could be used as part of an action item that could perhaps be used for future planning. So I know, you know, the board members don't necessarily approve administrative regulations, but I wanted you to also know that at this time, you know, the idea is for us to go back and look at these and perhaps update them as needed. I know that, and it was a very busy time to do this work, as well as kind of reopen, et cetera. And I just wanted to thank the directors for going out of their way to meet, because I know they had so many things on their plate already. But it was great to meet with every one of them, one-on-one, hear maybe some concerns, suggestions that they had and ideas, and then, and come together and create these. And so what I did was take all their words, come up with some language, shared it with them again, asked them to make any adjustments that they thought best matched what their committee members wanted. And then each of them, I think, have some ideas of next steps based on the work of the committee. And so, I will say that for the request of the board to write administrative regulations, we were able to do that using this process. And I was very thankful that we had the strong facilitator that we did in order to get to the work where we are now. I thought that it would be helpful to hear from some of the parent principals, assistant principals and director. So if they're on, I don't know if any of these people are there, or who are attending, but, attending, but, Kyle, continue.
Yeah, I saw Scarlett and, oh, I saw Scarlett.
Awesome. So, I sent an email to see if they would be interested, and I'm kind of sharing their perspective, and so.
So I tabled Scarlett right now.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate, I should stop.
Welcome, Scarlett.
Oh, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Scarlett Manetta, and I'm a Roosevelt parent of five kids, two of whom are in third and fourth grade at Roosevelt. This year, we're closely with their school administration and PTA as a D E I committee chair. I've had the privilege to work closely with some of our gifted English learners, providing supplemental tutoring and acting as an advocate for their families. Well, first, I would like to thank this opportunity, or take this opportunity to thank our school board members and superintendent for encouraging and fully supporting the fruition of the Education Equity Policy Committee, spearheaded by Ms. Linda Montes and facilitated by Dr. Yvette Jackson. The four sessions dedicated to the work of more than 54 members under the same virtual platform evoked pretty intense and meaningful conversations about the disparities within our school system and as a society as a whole. The focus groups and breakout sessions inspired all of us to listen to our peers, their experiences, listen to our community members that have been marginalized, and listen to the struggles that our very own kids at schools have sadly experienced and their hope for the future. The amount of time and work invested by members in my focus group on English learners was remarkable, not only because of the final product we were able to deliver, but rather coming to a common understanding of the many inconsistent practices, resources and systemic operational issues that have not served all of our kids. I don't measure the level of success in our school district by showcasing just a few schools to model best practices in social-emotional curriculum, N U A strategies adopted by some and not all schools, and newcomers academies offered only in selected schools. It was disheartening, but not surprising, to see the gap in academic progress through the I Ready Diagnostic Test. We simply are not tapping into their full potential. If I have encountered hiccups along my journey as a volunteer, then it only reaffirms that even greater challenges that our Spanish-speaking families have encountered, not being able to completely get the necessary support for their kids, especially during the pandemic, many of whom have academically regressed. And why is that? Is it because it's difficult for them to challenge the status quo for fear of retaliation? Is it because of the immense respect and trust that they place in our teachers, administrators and leaders in the district? And who are they to challenge the final word? Or simply because they're not educated of their rights as parents, of the services their kids should be getting, and who should be providing the services? Sadly, all these reasons have been validated with their shared experiences. My hope is that the framework presented today will spark a new movement to recognize the changes that need to be made, acknowledge our weaknesses as an institution, but also to ignite in all of us a renewed commitment to do better. We are capable of change, just like every child is capable of achieving great things, dreaming beyond their imagination, and believing in an equitable academic environment where every child and their families feel welcome. It's time for accountability to begin from the top down to ensure no child is left behind. It's time to bridge the communication and engagement gaps with families and ensure our teachers not only feel supported, but get the proper training to best serve both their newcomers and English learners. They too need to feel the love. Only then will we really reap the rewards from this committee and celebrate equitable practice throughout all of our schools. Thank you for your time.
That was like, a level of passion of all of them, many of them.
Powerful, Scarlett, thank you. Really appreciate it. I've really enjoyed getting to know you and work with you on this committee.
Absolutely.
So Dr. Montes, did we have anyone else?
Yeah, it's Laura. I don't know if Laura Isley is there, or Susanna.
I saw Susanna.
Okay, so maybe Susanna?
Okay, she's unmuted.
Thanks, Susanna. She was Assistant Principal of Roosevelt School.
Good night, Superintendent Dr. Baker, members of the board. I have been asked to share my experience with the Equity Committee and how this work has been important for me. In order to do so, I would like to start by providing some background. This is my first year in the Redwood City School District. When I accepted the Assistant Principal position at Roosevelt, I knew I was landing on an excellent school and district. At the beginning of last summer, I had the opportunity to attend the National Urban Alliance Summer Institute, where I was blown away with their values and the realities they presented. It was love at first sight. After the first 10 minutes listening to Dr. Yvette Jackson, I rushed onto Amazon to purchase her book. Her views on students and the inequities our students face compound all the voices we hear inside our heads. Voices that many times we can't make sense of, or even listen to, due to our busy lives or just because we don't want to take the time to stop and reflect, or even to put ourselves in that uncomfortable position of thinking if we are doing all we can to make a difference. As soon as we started school in August, I was able to meet our families and students, many of them in person, since they were navigating. Many of them in person since they were navigating the world of technology for the first time. It was then when I realized and I started to understand why they knew in work, how unlike our community was. We helped an enormous number of families without internet or any knowledge on how to use a computer, navigate a Google Meet or simply logging on to a device. While others were ready to start the class without hesitation, even providing their children with two computers so they could attend the meeting in one while working on the other one. We saw the inequity right away and did our board and district who jumped quickly to find the solutions to close the gap. But it was not until we met last month in the Equity Committee that each piece of the puzzle came together. Every action the district had taken, every decision we had made as administrators, every conversation that we have had with our teachers, families and students found common ground. In our conversations as committee members, we have been able to collaborate with other stakeholders, teachers, families, board members and other administrators. We have met to share views, values, realities and most importantly, to propose change and next the steps. Which are essential to move forward to the place where all our schools offer the opportunities, education and resources every student needs and deserves. Some of this have been tough because we were asked to step out of our comfort zone and to think beyond ourselves. Some were not enough and we had to come back for more. But we all shared the same vision and knew that if we didn't have these difficult conversations, we would remain in the same place. We would stay static and wouldn't grow as a school district. I feel this is just the beginning, that we have set a few next steps to ensure that our students thrive. Looking at what we have in play that has proved, has proved to work and also recognizing what doesn't, what needs to be improved. I know I have so much to work on myself and I see that inequity is still present. And that is our responsibility to create systems and structures that will change that. That is what the Equity Committee has meant to me. It has given me a voice, a vision and a purpose for everything I do when our families, the students and teachers come to school. For all this, I really want to thank Dr. Baker, Dr. Montes and the board for giving our community the chance to drive change. Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. So our last speaker actually is Kyle. He wanted to share as a director, some of his work on that committee.
So, so first of all, thank you everyone for giving me the opportunity to reach out to all of you. I thought the work on this committee really was beneficial for us as a district. Being the Director of Technology is one of the places where we see a lot of inequities in our community. They come out, they're, they're, they're right out in front of our face and we feel like we've taken some very significant steps in solving some of those inequities. But we still have a long way to go. I mean, we still have, we have put in, working with the county, put in additional access points. We've increased the access for families who don't have access at home by providing hotspots. We've tried to spread our resources across the district to the point where now we do have a device. We started the school year with a device for every single student. But some of those inequities, one that Susanna actually talked about in her speech, which is you have families that have an extra device. So a student could, could listen on one device and work on another device and it made that experience much better for them. So. We can't do everything, but we can work as diligent as we can to make sure that we try to solve some of these inequities that exist. One of the things that the committee did come up with that was significant was that they wanted to see the funding for specifically for devices and for software applications to be equitable across all school sites. There had been some inequities because of funding formulas. And one of the things that we'd like to see what this committee do or the board does. How do we level that out across the districts to ensure that every student has the same access to the same tools and both hardware and software tools? So we're going to also continue on, we're looking at some strategies that we can continue to provide. Access to students specifically in North Fair Oaks who don't have internet access at home and how we can even spread our connections from our school sites. Out into the community even further so they can connect in through us. So I think the work was valuable in the fact that we could really start to get to some foundational steps. And then once the foundation is set, how we could build upon that foundation to move forward. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present to all of you.
Thank you, Kyle. So what Kyle also mentioned a little bit was what I think happened to all of our directors is that there were some suggestions made that would not necessarily be a part of the AR. But could be action items. And I know, for example, when I spoke with Liz Wolf, that would be part of, that could be a part of the LCAP work that she was doing. And in fact, which was really cool is Liz took the Equity Committee. Members and invited them to participate in the LCAP. So those are some of the same members who are part of that LCAP process. So that was pretty seamless, which, which was great. And I'm, I'm glad you're able to do that. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Liz. Sorry. Okay, so then, so you all were, had an opportunity to read the ARs. Thank you, Aviana, for uploading those along with the, for the equity policy as well. So are there any specific questions? So we wanted to get to the next one.
So, so just for the panelists and the audience, so we just kind of reviewed the committee work. We have the administrative regulations which are attached to the agenda. And the board actually does not approve the administrative regulations, but the, but they are. What our staff are doing, right? And they can be updated and revised along the way. So it's a great starting point. We haven't had something like this before. So the other piece of what we wanted to try to cover in this session was the vision and mission as well. So I do want to take just a couple of minutes on the ARs if there's any specific questions or comments. I actually was just texting Dr. Baker and Janet Lawson. Because one thing we were thinking about is, you know, we got off to a late start with this. And also this is a really important topic. We want to give it its due. So we could, we, we still have a little bit of time in this session, but we could also, when we get to the end of this, table it into the next meeting. So we're figuring out a way to do that. So I don't want us to feel rushed, but I just want to sort of be cognizant of what we were hoping to cover tonight was both the ARs and the vision and mission. All right. So any, any clarifying questions around the process or the administrative regulations? Oh, and actually I do want to note that I know that we have Ann and Jason who want to speak. I will have you speak in just a few minutes. So I do see that you're on the speaker card. So anyway, any clarifying questions or comments from the board?
Is this where we ask questions about or comments about the ARs themselves? Yeah, okay. Well, first, first of all, I just wanted to say thanks to the committee, tremendous work. The directors for putting together the ARs, they're really, really descriptive and in depth and Dr. Montes for helping to guide this. I took a chance to sort of look through the ARs and compare against the DARE tool. Because it has nice domains put out there to look at it. And it was really impressive how much it really lined up with the prompts where it would say, you know, ask and then look for this and ask and look for this. There were a few domains though that had a couple of questions that I thought we, we might want to go back and see if they can get in or leave in as if we go back through. I'll give out the one for vision. We can talk about that later. But in the access to rich and deeper learning and culturally responsive curriculum, et cetera. So much of it was addressed. I'm not going to kid around, especially around curriculum and professional development. But one of the asks was, does every student have access to college and career oriented instruction? And we probably pushed that back because we're not quite at the high school level. But it, one of the looks for us is just participation and pass rates disaggregated. And I thought that's actually probably a good thing to think about. When we're looking at, we could almost even apply it to the ask above it about rich curriculum, which touches on arts and music and PE. What's participation and what's pass rate disaggregated? And we do track in the seventh and eighth grade. And so it would be that, that sort of look might be a nice thing to put in there as part of the. You know, as we're building out these systems here. And the other one was just, again, it's systems for gathering, communicating and using the data. The ask is, does, do the district and schools analyze and arrange the student outcomes and academic, social and emotional supports by race? You know, I saw it specifically in the Human Resources Department, had it really disaggregated by where teachers are placed and staff along that. And so my, my question really is just, does that apply to the other departments? Is there a way to weave that through the rest of the ARs? But again, thanks for the work. It's awesome.
Yeah, I could take it back to the directors, Mike. So Liz, do you want to say anything about that also?
Yes, now that I found the button to unmute myself, sorry about that. Yes, no, absolutely. If we didn't address those as fully as you'd like, we'd be happy to. So yeah.
It, it may be in there. I'll be honest, like I might've missed it, but I just wanted to call them out because they, they didn't leap out to me, but thanks.
Yeah. And I think it was because we were thinking that that was really more directed towards high school, but we definitely can figure out how to make that applicable to our, to our grade level spans.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other questions on that?
So I don't, I don't really have any questions. I just really appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I know, you know, Lisa and I are on the policy committee and. As we brought that equity policy to the board and it was approved, I think in November 2020. I feel like we all looked at each other and went, the ARs, there's so much weight that needs to go into this. And it's such a huge thing. We need so much community input. And I, I really appreciate how quickly that group came together and, you know, significant. Input from all over the place, from parents and directors and principals and. I, I felt like that whole process was really well done. And I think that shows in the ARs that you've brought forward to us. And I did, as Mike kind of mentioned, I wanted to point out that Wendy, I really appreciate what your department has kind of put forward in looking at the equity by school site. You know, the longevity of, of teachers and where they're placed around the district and, you know, teacher retention by school site. And I think that's really important for the district to keep an eye on. You know, the, the policies tell the district what the board's vision is and what we want to see, but it's really the ARs that tell. The district how to move forward with this. And I think it's really important that we keep this particular AR kind of at the forefront, especially through the years. Right now, it's really easy to have it at the forefront of our brains, but I think, you know, in five, 10 years, it's really easy to forget that work that's been done already and that we know that we need to move forward with. So somehow making sure that we continue to remind ourselves and look back at that. And I know that's written into the ARs. That it's something that each department needs to continue to look at. So I, I think that's. The board's responsibility too, to all of us to make sure that we continue to come back to that and ask, how is this going? So again, thank you and appreciate the, the work of everybody that's gone into this. You know, it's not like we haven't had a ton of other things to work on, right? There's been a lot and I think you've done a really good job.
Thank you. I will again, thank all the directors because, and others who supported the directors as well and part of the committee. And all the parents participated. I mean, there was so much work that. And so much documentation that we can use for other items as well, which we're going to talk about in just a little bit, for example, but also for example, for the LCAP and any other of the actions that we need. I know, but they say use it for special education, et cetera. So, you know, I think it was a very powerful process. And I think Dr. Baker and the board. For that work and for, again, Dr. Jackson, because she's just an amazing facilitator anyway. Thank you.
I'm wondering if we should take, we do have a couple of comments.
Sure.
So why don't Jason Galasadas and Ann Heinecheck, we could bring them up. They'd like to say a few words. All right, Jason, welcome. You just have to unmute, I think.
Jason's in twice, so I'm going to allow both of his accounts to, to speak.
Everyone, can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, honorable members of the board. As Jason Galasadas, I'm the Executive Director of the Redwood City Education Foundation. Speaking on behalf of the foundation, we have a lot of board members here tonight as well. We're all really thrilled about this work. We are absolutely delighted by the outcome of the Equity Committee and we just want to commend the thorough, thoughtful and proactive nature of this policy and the administrative directives. To say the least, our district has had been, has been extremely busy managing one of the largest crises in our history. And the fact that you were able to achieve this outcome really speaks to the commitment, the dedication and the leadership. On the part of this committee, the board members and our staff. And, and yet we also know that the pandemic has brought these inequities into such sharp focus. And our district has done a tremendous job in responding in an equitable manner. So we really applaud you. As we reported to the board when we last presented, RCF also discussed this topic of equity and how we can implement this value in practice. And let me tell you, it is not easy. It takes honesty, vulnerability and bravery. And that's exactly what we see reflected in this work. And what this work gives us as RCF, an organization that focuses on supporting the district. Is strong direction and a clear sense of the role that we could play in advancing our shared values here. So I don't want to take up much more time than I already have, other than to say congratulations and thank you for this fantastic work to our school district. This is, this is a win for each and every one of our students, for our entire district. So we'd like to thank, thank you, Dr. Baker, Dr. Montes, our trustees and the volunteers on this, on this committee. You guys are all true heroes and you take heroic actions every single day on behalf of our, of our students. And as an alum, our CSD alum myself, I'm, I'm very, very proud of this district. So I just want to reiterate, RCF's shared commitment to being a partner and advancing this critical value of equity. And, and thank you for this work.
Thank you, Jason. And we certainly do appreciate the partnership with RCF. Absolutely. All right. And I think we're going to bring Ann on. Do you see her, Kyle?
Yep.
Thanks. Welcome, Ann.
Hello. So I just wanted to kind of hop in real quickly. And so I'm Ann Heinecheck and I was, had the. Luxury of being on this committee. And I'm also a member of RCF with Jason. And I just wanted to say thank you for involving our community and for allowing us to go through this process. I think it was a great, it was a fantastic first step. And it was a, an incredible conversation starter. I personally learned so much just being able to speak with. Different people from different schools, from the district and being able to put some things together. And I just want to encourage all of the next steps that happen after this, because I feel like now we know kind of where some of, where some of our deficiencies are. And what we need to start to do to create more equity in our, in our community. So I just wanted to encourage everyone to continue on that next step. And also to ask just for the transparency that I think that we have kind of started with this. So it would be lovely to see, you know, the steps that we're taking and where we are in those steps from a community standpoint. So that's something that I just wanted to encourage. And I just really appreciate all the time that everybody spent on this and thank you for making it a priority, especially right now when there are so, so many priorities. We know that there's value in diversity and it's nice to be able to see that in some of these meetings and the time that our district is taking. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And thanks for being on the committee. And I, I do want to say that one of the things we've been talking about is how we continue this work with the committee. So. An equity conscious committee. So there'll be more conversation about that at a future board meeting. You have to think about staffing and that sort of thing. But I do think your point is well taken around the reporting back on how things are going. So one of the things I thought our policy committee can do is we can look at the equity policy and make sure that we have. That sort of reflection time built into the policy. We, we do do that. Will there be, you know, semi annual or annual report outs on the equity work as an example? So I do think that's important to do. So I think, so thank you, Dr. Montes and all of our staff and committee members on all of the work. That went into the committee as well as the administrative regulations. And then what happened is a smaller subset of that group got together to work on the vision and mission. And given that it's 6:54 PM and we have a seven o'clock start with our regular meeting on a different Zoom account. Lessons learned, I think we just learned some lessons on logistically, how to set this up for next time, or I have anyway. So I think what we'll do is I'm going to ask for a motion to table the continuance of this conversation. To our seven o'clock meeting and we will figure out where to put it on the agenda. And we will figure out where to put it on the agenda when we get to the seven o'clock meeting. So could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to table this discussion to the seven o'clock meeting.
Second that.
All right, Maria, seconds. We'll call vote for that.
Wels.
Aye.
Jesse Lawson.
Aye.
Jesse Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Dea Silcom.
Aye.
President Mappel.
Aye. All right, so we just tabled, I don't know if we need an adjournment as well, but I think that means, we're not actually adjourning the meeting yet, so never mind, we just tabled it into the next one. So I think we're good unless somebody, everyone's shaking their hands.
You will just need to, as we start the next meeting. Meeting is agendized at seven o'clock. And you want to seal this forward. So when it comes to changing the agenda, you're going to have to state that.
Thank you, thank you. And I think we can have the conversation there. But for the audience members who are on here interested in this subject, I'm going to propose that we actually carry this forward after the reopening discussion because I know there'll be a lot of people coming on to that item who are interested in that. I'm hoping that everybody will stay for the Equity, well, the Vision and Mission. But my guess is that's where it'll go in case you're on here for this. So hopefully you'll come to the rest of the meeting that we're going to next week. All right, so let's go ahead and we're going to all get off of this. And for our audience members, there is another Zoom, so go back to the Redwood City website, find that Zoom, and we'll see you in just a couple of minutes. Thanks.